We're going to call to order the January 5th School Committee meeting and at 6 o'clock. And we're going to get started with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance, which applies to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next, we have our typical check regarding our audio recordings. If there is anyone audio or video recording the meeting tonight other than the town. Not seeing any, thank you. Next, we have our public comment portion of the day. We have a few folks here with us in the hall. Anybody interested in making any public comments tonight? Seeing none, thank you. Up next is our consent agenda. The first item is the minutes from last, our last meeting, a couple of weeks ago. This is right before the holiday. You have the minutes in your email as well as in your packet. And if we are ready, we welcome a motion for the minutes.
Mr. Chair.
Great.
I'll move that we approve the minutes as presented.
We have a motion, a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the minutes from December 20th?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I did send a couple of corrections to Liz. They were just minor edits. Nothing, nothing that's substantial enough to make, to make us hold them.
Are they incorporated in this version?
I don't believe so, no.
Typos, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mostly typos, so.
Okay. Let's see, Larry, would you?
Could amend.
Would you mind if a friendly amendment to your motion?
It was Greg.
Greg's motion that we approve the minutes pending any typo-like corrections that were submitted to Liz by the members.
Yes, I will not move. That's fine with me.
I second that.
We have a second to the amendment?
You have a second.
Fantastic. Discussion on the motion or the amendment? Very good. Those in favor of the minutes? Alicia?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and it is unanimous. Our next item is the MASC Student Council Trip. And in your packet, you have some information about this trip. I believe it's near the back of your packet. And we'll turn to the superintendent to walk us through this.
If I may, thank you. This may be out here mistakenly. This is not an out-of-state field trip, which requires School Committee approval. It is an overnight field trip, which is not really specified on our form, but it's also very nice and informative is that it's MASC and, and our student council. So I think the details are on the page, and if there's any questions, Ms. Rondo can of course answer those as well tonight.
Mr. Chair.
Larry?
I believe that if, I believe that overnights are required.
We were going back and forth about that because it wasn't on the form. So if that's so, we want to add that to the form so that it's more clear going forward.
I know when I was chair, we did a number of them, and it was because they were overnights.
Overnights.
Oh, I'm glad.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the field trip by the student council to the MASC Annual Conference in Hyannis.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the MASC Annual Conference. Any discussion? All right, very good. Though, let's take a vote on the motion and start with Karen, please.
Aye.
And Larry?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Alicia?
Yeh.
And the chair votes aye. It is unanimous. Thank you. Next, we have the Student Representative Report, and Angelina.
All right. So, starting off, Murdoch Middle and High Schools have a new electronic sign at the end of our driveway. The sign was gifted in part by the classes of 2019, 2020, 2021, and 2022. On November 30th, the Murdoch Chapter of NHS inducted 11 new members. On December 12th, five members of the NHS, along with our four members of the Middle School Student Council, attended a wreath laying ceremony at the Massachusetts State House to kick off the Wreaths Across America Week. Tiana Gressel, Abigail Guera, and I sang the National Anthem to sick off, uh, kick off the ceremony. On December 16th, NHS and the Middle School Student Council were scheduled to attend the wreath laying ceremony at the Veterans Cemetery in Winchandon. But unfortunately, the snow day prohibited anyone from attending, everyone from attending. We'll be helping with the wreath cleanup on Friday, January 13th. The middle and high school winter band and chorus concert was held on December 14th. There was a sixth grade dance at the middle school on Friday, December 2nd, sponsored by the Middle School Student Council. On December, sorry, November 17th, Student Council attended the regional conference at Worcester Technical High School. I was able to attend the conference with some of my peers, and we took part in a series of workshops on topics involving communication, team building, and the importance of a council, an inclusive council. Murdoch Middle School and High School Student Council and the High School National Honor Society packed over 30 food baskets for district families for the holidays. This was possible using donations from the middle, uh, middle school food drive and the high school Let's Talk Turkey contest, as well as the Winchandon Teachers Association. Murdoch Student Council is hosting the Central Region, Regional Special Olympics Bocce Tournament on Friday, January 27th, with opening ceremonies beginning at 3:30 PM. 11 schools will be competing with mixed teams of Special Olympians and partner athletes. The public is welcome to attend. Rehearsals are underway for this year's musical Matilda, which will be performed on February 3rd and 4th. Tickets are $10. Children 10 and under are $7, and senior citizens are free with donations accepted. For tickets, please call Tina Santos at 978-855-9358. Leave a message with your contact information if needed. Seating assignments are first come, first served. And then with sports, indoor track, basketball, and cheer have become their, have begun their seasons. Middle School Boys and Girls Basketball is playing Gardner Middle School tonight at Murdoch. High School Boys play Bromfield at home tomorrow, 5:30 for Junior Varsity and 7 o'clock for Varsity. High School Girls play at Bromfield at 7:00 PM tomorrow. The Winter Track Team has a freshman and sophomore meet at the Reggie Lewis Center on Sunday at 10:00 AM. And for up-to-date sports schedules, they can be found at M W L M A dot org. That is my report.
Fantastic. Questions for Angelina?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Angelina, so, you went so fast. And there was so much there. But the one that really, I'm interested right now is, you guys sang at the introduction to the, the wreath?
Yes.
At the State House?
Yes, it was at the State.
Where are the pictures?
Um, there's a video.
There's a video? Is it on, on our website?
It was on Blue Devil Weekly update document. Yeah, so it was, it was put into Blue Devil Weekly. What had happened was the person that they had asked to sing the National Anthem was not able to make it. So Ms. Marinelli kindly volunteered me, Tiana, and Abby.
Had me volunteered.
It was, it was, it was good.
One step forward. You just volunteered.
We were voluntold, but it was good. It was good. I had never sang the National Anthem. I just joined select choir, so that was kind of interesting to do that for the first time, but it was, it was really nice, and the ceremony was really nice to be able to be there. It was in the Hall of Flags.
And we, and we do have a video and pictures, and it's, where would I find it? I have to go back to?
Uh, it was in the Blue Devil Weekly for that week, that following week, like it's already December 15th, but I'm certainly looking forward to it to be put on the school website, the, the.
Can we get it on the district website?
Sure.
That's kind of a cool thing.
Yeah, that's cool.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Were you on tune, or?
I hope so.
No one ever asked me to sing it. No one asked me. Murphy monotone.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Angelina, can you give the, the date and location for the Special Olympics event again?
Yes.
Please.
January 27th. January 27th.
Did you give us that?
At.
Oh, it's going to be up here, okay.
It begins at 3:30.
3:30.
All right, great. Thank you.
Other questions for Angelina? All right. Thank you very much for a great report. Yep, as always. So many wonderful things going on and such a great report, so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Following up that great report is the superintendent's report.
Thank you. So we have a few things tonight, starting with the budget update. And before Ms. Babinski gives that update, I just wanted to, to recognize what Ms. Cast requested at the last meeting, which is to put it up in such a way that viewers at home can see it. So when we went through the, the current year-to-date, which you all have in your packet, which is, you know, forty-some-odd pages, we definitely felt like that's not the most viewable, if you will, in scrolling through 46 pages for those at home and watching on the screen. So we do not have it for the screen tonight, but we are going to propose in the next meeting, and to yourself, with the chair, a new format that might be more user-friendly or viewer-friendly than, you know, squinting our eyes at a Munis report. So going forward, we will have that. Tonight, we'll do it in the same format, but we will have that to be viewed for those at home going forward.
I appreciate anything that does not involve squinting.
Yeah, I mean, you know, when we looked at this, this is just not viewer-friendly, so.
No, I know.
When we thought about like how we go through this and look at it and turn to this page and turn to that page and looking at this on the screen, we'll be scrolling, you know, back and forth across forty-some-odd pages, is not something that I'm looking forward to doing. So we'll have a, a new format going forward.
I appreciate that greatly.
So I just wanted to put that out upfront.
Does that mean that we'll get a new format in this, too?
That's correct.
Awesome.
All right. So with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Babinski.
Absolutely. So you'll see your budget report is very similar as it was last month. We did meet with Town Hall, our town accountant, retired town accountant, who is going to be working and helping us in the, in the interim. She was working on reclasses today, which I know we keep bringing up. There's some salary reclasses that need to happen, as well as some reclasses to the custodial and maintenance line item, expense line items. She was working on those today, so it should be reflected in the next budget update, which will be good. Otherwise, certainly on track for where we should be at this point in the year. Over the last few weeks, looking a little bit more deeply into some of the salary line items and whatnot, so that you'll have a clearer picture in March of any balances that may, may be there to certainly move forward with any projects for the spring.
Great. Questions for Amanda?
Just, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
So, it always just makes me nervous when I see, for example, para salary, you know, it's $8,000 left, and we're not even halfway there yet, so.
Page three.
Just, hopefully in the new format and whatever new presentation method that you use, we can get some kind of quick, you know, so we don't have to read 46 pages. Anything that looks like it's going to promote a deficit, you may have an explanation for it. It's really not going to be a deficit, but, but if it was highlighted somehow, either in red or, or some way where it's highlighted, so we could see it real quickly, and then we could ask, you know, why is this one look like it's almost depleted? And then you can say, well, then whatever your explanation is. I just want to, see, I lived through something that you guys didn't live through, Greg and I did. And that was the nightmare of not knowing where any of the money was. And we got reports at every meeting, and they were basically meaningless. We were told that there was money there, then there wasn't money there, then there was money there, then there wasn't money there, and then all of a sudden, at the end of the year, we were talking about going back to the town and asking for more money because we didn't have enough. And then in June, we find out we gave money back.
Right.
To the town.
Yep.
So, that's why. Whatever method that you come up with, if it, if it's more user-friendly for us, so that we can see and get an explanation, and it would, it would be great. Right now, we, we have to go through 46 pages and, I know I'm retired, and you say, well, you got the time. I can't believe how busy I am in retirement, so I, I don't want to go through 46 pages. I just want to know where things look like they're, they, they need an explanation. And I'm sure the superintendent knows, because he was a high school principal as well, he'll know the questions that we're probably going to ask, so.
And I think, if I may, we're trying not to be repetitive in each of these meetings where I think we, this specific example, and I know you just picked one, the very first thing that came across. You know, we addressed the para piece. It's been a number of months ago now, but our, we know that what the problem is, we know that there's people there that shouldn't be, and so on and so forth, but with the turnover in staff here at Town Hall, it limits our ability to actually correct it in, in Munis until someone is in that can actually perform those moves. And so that's been the case. I think recently, the former, the retired accountant, as just mentioned, has come back, but she's only working, I think, six hours a week? So we're going to chip away at it. She's aware of all the things that we've requested, but, you know, at the same time, we're trying to be respectful and not come in here and every week, say, hey, the pares, don't forget, we did this last time, or whatever those things are. So I think you'll see going forward that we'll have a format that is, like you said, more user-friendly, and it will highlight those specific items that we think you should be looking at.
Well, I think you could also, you could paraphrase a little bit. You could say that in the salary lines, you'll notice that some of the things look like they're running out. They're really not, and we've explained it before, but that covers all the salary. And same with the other departments and whatnot. It just.
Yeah, so, so basically, what I've been working on is, is building the, the format, taking your accounts and, and sort of shuffling them into my template. And so once, once that's complete, I'll sit with Mr. King and kind of go through it and, and see, you know, how we want to present it. But what it is ultimately is, what you have is the Munis report, so that's all the, what's actually on the books as of right now. So we know that individuals were charged to that para line item that, that shouldn't have been charged to that line item. So we asked the town to move that money to a different line item. And what I'm proposing is a template which summarizes that, but also has the ability for us to explain that in the notes. So, I mean, ultimately, based on your experience previously, you may still want to get the 46-page printout, so you see the actuals, but the template would be a summary of, of where we're at, and it may not be actuals because we would, we would move the reclasses so that you can see what, what we're proposing. And you would actually see some of, you know, for example, you may have budgeted, I'm just going to throw out random numbers, but maybe you budgeted $200,000 for teachers at the high school, but there was a few openings and whatnot, so you really only have 180,000 encumbered, and you're going to have a, a balance of 20,000. Well, as a committee, you may want to know that, but in Munis, we're still going to encumber the whole amount because, you know, that's just how you do it. Physically responsibly. So the, the report is a summary and an interpretation of the budget, so we can kind of work through it over the next few months. I'm, I'm sure you'll want tweaks, and I was telling Mr. King, you know, I sort of learned as I went previously as well, and this would be only the second committee really that I've worked with, so I, I welcome feedback, and we can tweak it to, to really meet your needs. But just as a starting point, to try to summarize the budget, because there's so many lines, you know, and you, and you don't necessarily, it's not that you don't, you don't care, but the emphasis should not be on how mu, how much you've spent on grade-one teachers. It should be, where are we at with our, you know, regular education classroom teachers? You know, where's our salary?
Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes, Larry.
Just, I just want to, I wanted to give you that background about why we're a little nervous.
Absolutely.
About, because we've been burnt. And, you know, we were very trusting and whatnot. I thought things were going to get straightened out, and they, I don't know, how many years? Six years?
At least, yeah.
They were never straightened out. So we really, whatever you come up with, we'd just like to have that confidence that we know that the money is going to end up in the right buckets, and it's going to be spent appropriately. And two, that the money that we approved, that the town approved, is going to go in the buckets it's supposed to go in.
Correct.
And three, that the, we're not going to give large chunks of money back when we so desperately need every penny that we, that have been appropriated. We need the money. We don't want to be given back hundreds of thousands of dollars when we need it here.
Right.
So, so I'm just sharing with you, I'll just speak for myself, but that's my sentiment from my experience. Whatever you come up with, if you hit those goals, then I think we'll rebuild the confidence that we lost.
Absolutely.
Or at least Greg and I lost.
Yeah. Mr. Chair.
Yes, Greg.
I think part of it is, another reason for the nervousness is that we're, and we're glad that, that you're here, and, you know, hopefully you'll be here for a while, but some of the problems over the years, I think, can at least partially be attributed to the fact that we'd have a business manager for, you know, a few months, and then a vacancy, and then another business manager for a few months, and then another lengthy vacancy, and then someone else that just came in and, and then was gone, and that certainly didn't help the consistency for the budget keeping either, so.
Absolutely.
So chain her to her desk that, and.
Duly noted.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes. My, my interpretation in looking, looking at your budget is, is that you, you are in good shape. The Munis report does not tell the story, so, you know, every committee sets their visions and their goals, and, and, and your, your money should, should speak to that, and you cannot speak to it with this report. So hopefully, the summary will kind of speak to that a little bit more, and then you can, you know, we can tweak it to meet your needs. Absolutely.
Thank you. Chair?
Thank you. And I, I think you're probably going to be able to better answer this when we go forward. But like, like with Larry, I mean, I, like, one of the things that jumped out at me was like, Toy Town Principal, our available budget is negative $15. So, you know, I look at that, and I'm like, well, how did we do that? You know, so I look at that, and I look at the custodial staff, like, those were the ones that jumped out at me. Like, why are we negative? Is that a matter of, like, things were charged to the wrong line item? Is that the same thing?
Yeah, so again, we have probably, and I'm not exaggerating here, a couple of months' worth of reclassification, so it is where things ended up in the wrong line items, you know. There, there are definitely pieces of, custodial is a really great example.
Right.
Where there's a lot of, there are a lot of places where you can assign expenses, you know, whether it's our HVAC line, we have individual building lines, we've got a special projects line. And so what oftentimes happens is, they'll end up in the building base line, and you say, no, that was HVAC, that needs to go to this, this line. So what we've done over the past amount of time, you know, usually we would catch that in stream, so between these two meetings, it would be transparent. You wouldn't necessarily see it. We caught it, we just get it moved, it takes place at Town Hall. But right now, we're probably at around two and a half months' worth of that work that's just backing up, that just, that quite literally nobody has the ability to do. So typically, you wouldn't continue to see those things, because we would get them cleaned up, and it, and it would be reflected in those line item details. We just don't have the ability right now. So what we've been doing is quite simply keeping a stack. You know, there's a form that we use to send over to Town Hall back and forth, so we've been sending those over. I'm sure somebody is not really happy with the stack on their desk. And then we keep a backup on our side so that we can go through and do the checks. But I think, literally just met with Joey yesterday?
Today, this morning.
Today. So, I mean, she's only been here twice since coming out of retirement. The first time we, we're not able to see her, because apparently the town manager had more pressing items than we did, which I say in all due respect. And so, you know, today, she was able to come over, and so that we could actually prioritize. So one of the things we kind of have done is to say, you know, there's a lot that needs to happen here. Some things are much more important than others. So prioritizing for her to say, this is, these are the things that we really need to see. So some of that might be posting grants and doing grant workups, where we've got that money, but until it's entered into Munis in a specific way, we can't actually access it. So, you know, we're really trying to prioritize so that we can get the things done that we need to do to continue operating. But I think we're in a good place, and she's coming forward, and she's, I think she was really amenable to some of the work that we wanted to do.
Yes, we made a great plan today. We're actually going to scan her, you know, the, the three main areas that we need her to work on once a week, and she will take care of them weekly for us. If we, you know, just sort of organize them a little bit for her, it will make it a lot faster, and, and we should be, we should be good moving forward with her. She was great.
And that's what I figured. I, I just wanted to clarify for, for my own sake, just because I know, I knew we did good contracts for all our, our people, but I didn't think it was that good, that our custodians were.
The account that you're actually referring to is, is a membership line, not a salary line, so it's, it's an expense line.
Yep.
And again, that's, that's one of the issues with the Munis report, is, you know, you're only getting a short description, so you don't really see it. So you're seeing principal, and you're thinking, oh, we're over on the salary, whereas, you know, the, the professional memberships that administrators belong to, to get so much information, was $15 more than expected. So, you know, it, it's not a huge deal, but you can't really see that in that Munis report.
I just thought it was a funny amount to over, to be over. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions on the budget? Good to move on? Okay. So I think the next item is the literacy update. So before we got here tonight, so I've been trying to work on a quick presentation to just address a couple of concerns that were raised at the last meeting. This is certainly not intended to be comprehensive, so this is just sort of ongoing from what we, you know, left the last time. And we'll do it again, what is, on the 19th. So, that being said, I'll just go through a, a couple of items. I'm not here to rehash the things that we presented the last time. This is just to address a few things that, that seem to be pressing. So a, a few of those pieces. We've organized a few, what I'm going to call facilitated stakeholder forums, and I'll, I'll show those dates and whatnot, they've been published or publicized already. There were some questions, I think, from Ms. Cast around low income and slash poverty levels, like some more specific numbers, broken down to the best of our ability. Itemized a few budget impacts, and, and another biggie that I know comes up and is always coming up over at Memorial School, is the drop-off pickup and sort of traffic flow. So I just kind of wanted to address a few of those things this evening, and certainly open to some questions if, if necessary. So, real quickly, this is just informative, some facilitated stakeholder forums. So, parent-community forums, we've organized for next week and tried to provide some different time opportunities for families, you know, those working parents or parents that have to pick up kids after school. So we have on Monday, January 9th, at 9:00 AM, and these are specifically for parents and, and community members, at the Murdoch High School Library. And then again, on Tuesday, January 10th, at 6:30, so an evening event at the Murdoch Auditorium. And so to kind of be clear on what each of these, and the teacher forum, we will have as well facilitated, Ms. Rondo's actually going to facilitate that particular event with all the teachers, is also Tuesday, January 10th, 3:30, at the Toy Town Building. And to be specific about what these are going to look like, we're, we're not going to present the entire presentation we did here to School Committee, but we'll do a quick three- or four-page, you know, overview of what was presented. And then there will be a facilitated conversation where we're specifically looking for whomever the stakeholders are, what their concerns are, not to be addressed in that forum per se, but to hear what their concerns are so that we can be addressed going forward, most specifically on the 19th. So we try to make events where, you know, those times are available and, and days are available to different folks. We're also going to survey students. Yes, sir?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the time.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Larry.
Tuesday, January 10th. Is it gonna, is that gonna, is it basketball game or any events going on that night?
Uh, we didn't really look, the focus on these, these events are really more the elementary stu, I mean, the elementary parents are the ones who are mostly impacted. So we weren't as concerned around the high school events that would be taking place on those evenings as the high school was really minimally impacted if at all. So the focus here was on really the elementary and younger, you know, families of younger parent, younger students. To be honest, I don't know if there's an event on Tuesday night, I don't know if that was in the student report.
Uh, Derek, the varsity team cannot play on weekdays, so I'm looking right now to see if they play the middle school game, which it is, there's a middle school game at three thirty and.
Yeah, they're immediately after school.
Yeah, so we might want.
So we're good. And there's no rehearsals or anything, so, you know, we've checked to make sure for availability. So at any rate, there will be a very short, you know, three or four slide kind of overview, then facilitated to hear concerns with a note taker to record that in those events. We're expecting about an hour event for each of those, each of those forums. We're also going to do student surveys. It'll mostly be at the high school. You know, I'm not sure that we really want to survey third and fourth graders to get feedback, but I think students who have been through our district and to hear what we're planning and hear what their concerns might be as students who have been through our district, to get some feedback from them as well, any concerns or things that they think should be addressed. So we should have all that, you know, and plenty of time for our next meeting on the nineteenth to present out what those concerns are and potentially address with those concerns if we haven't already. So those are, those are the events that are, that are planned. And I believe the parent community forums were advertised, if you will, through a newsletter that went out yesterday. They're on the district Facebook page, they're on the district website, all with the original presentation as well. So teachers already have the presentation in full and that date and time was just agreed to this afternoon, so that'll get publicized as well.
Mr. Chair.
Karen?
Sorry. Just as far as the student survey, can we add middle school students to that?
I think we can add some middle school students, yeah. We can probably, I would want to just, you know, confer with Ms. Vazina in terms of their availability.
Right.
But most of this will be more of a survey as opposed to a face to face during advisory, so.
Well, that's what I'm.
It shouldn't be an issue.
Yeah, that's why I'm saying, you know, maybe just where you said, I understand not doing elementary students.
Yeah, doesn't make a lot of sense.
But maybe, maybe adding the.
We could go down to like seventh grade, I think, could make some sense.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Yeah. We can talk to Ms. Vazina and see if we can distribute the survey there as well.
Right. And maybe, and I don't know if you can do this, but I'm just looking at the time. I mean, I think the six thirty would probably be a great time. I don't know how feasible nine AM is going to be for some parents, however.
Well, the approach was to give two times and the nine o'clock was most specifically for those parents who do a drop off and then are available while their kids are at school during the day. So we're just trying to make a situation where, you know, the moms who are at home and have some time when kids are away, or dads, whomever that happens to be today, have some options where they might not be able to make it at night. So, I mean, there's no, there was no perfect morning time, but.
Absolutely.
You know what I mean? Yeah.
I was just wondering if maybe we should put together some kind of survey to send out to parents.
Too late now. By the time you get the survey back, we wouldn't get it back for the ninth.
Why would we need it back for the ninth?
You'd do it after the ninth.
It could be back after the ninth.
We can, we can address it.
Oh, yeah, for the morning.
I follow what you're saying.
I'm just saying, for parents who maybe can't make either of these community forums, it might, because there are parents that work more than one job or may not.
Absolutely.
Have the ability to make these times. I'm just thinking, if we can send out a community survey, that's always helpful.
I'm sure we can endeavor to put something together.
I figured you could. I think you're pretty good with that stuff, so.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
No problems. I think there'd been an ask for some details, you know, more specific details about low income slash poverty levels. And there were some interesting things that sort of presented out of this, quite frankly. So this is straight from the DESI website, you know, DESI, DESI is who defines our, quote unquote, our low income, and they have a very specific way that they do that. It is not necessarily, excuse me, specifically tied to the definition of Massachusetts low income, which for, you know, a four person household, I think low income is defined by state definition, if you will, is somewhere around seventy-four thousand dollars of income. The DESI definition is not tied to that directly. It also includes anyone on SNAP, it includes any students who might be considered in the DCF system. So it has some other variables, which is sort of interesting. So you can see here going from pre-K at a forty-eight, you know, forty-eight point six percent are considered quote unquote, low income by DESI. Memorial is our highest school, basically sixty-one percent low income. Toy Town and Murdoch Middle are around, you know, fifty-five. The interesting piece to this for me is when I was going through this, so this, if you were to go to that DESI website, they actually just articulate selected populations, you know, low income, high needs and so on, and it's just the percentage of your school. But I did some quick math when I, when I thought about it, I thought, well, I just want to have a quick look. So as an example, Toy Town, as you, as everybody knows, all grades there, three, four and five, all take the MCAS test. So the MCAS is also broken down by low income versus all students. And so when I did the math on how DESI looks at the MCAS takers and who's low income versus the all students, the number is actually much higher. So they calculate it differently for the whole school versus those who take MCAS. So when you look at it from the MCAS numbers, so the number of students who took MCAS that were considered low income against all students, and by the way, we had a ninety-nine percent to a hundred percent participation rate, so this includes all students in the building, those all come out at over sixty percent low income, which is an interesting, and actually Ms. Pivinsky has a better way of explaining it than I do because, but it relates to when they, they start looking at low income for MCAS, they start including those who would have otherwise be on reduced lunch, where low income in their overall estimation does not include that. I think I have that right. So as at least one of the variables. So it's interesting that the way that they actually present those numbers, they're actually different numbers. But regardless, they're all well over fifty percent and jumping up into the sixty percent, at least for those who are taking the test. The one that's really interesting to me is the last one, and it's children under five, and of course, that's what we're talking about here. And we're talking about that relationship around poverty levels and, you know, academic achievement. And this one is specifically the poverty level is defined by the state. At, I believe, a family of four, the poverty level is somewhere around, I'm just, it's a rough number, around thirty-five thousand dollars in income. Forty percent of our children at under five are in homes at or below the poverty level in the town of Winchton. This actually comes from a Haywood Hospital report around, you know, food and those types of things that they've put together for the entire region and specified communities. It's a pretty big number at forty percent at the poverty level, so we're talking thirty thousand dollars. And I, when you start thinking about this, it makes sense. Young families are starting off, it's a different struggle and we always expect to see as, as kids get older, families are growing older and moving up, if you will, and the numbers generally decrease. But we have had about a fifteen percent increase from pre-pandemic numbers, which is the part that's, you know, that's alarming for all of us, not, not just from an academic perspective, but from a community perspective when we look at these numbers. So those are the absolute numbers that come from DESI and/or state numbers that Haywood Hospital was able to procure, so.
These are, Mr. Superintendent, these are striking numbers. Even if they were at forty percent, that would still be a high rate. Fifty, sixty, fifty-two percent is, is very, very high for any municipality. The only question I have is your last point about the change since before COVID. Did you say that the children under five rate of forty percent was fifteen percent lower prior to COVID? Is that what you said?
That's not the under five. That was more specifically, our Winchton Public Schools have increased by, overall, you know, it's a different breakdown by building, but pre-COVID, I think it was the two thousand eighteen numbers, was at about forty, we were forty percent low income, if you will, by definition of DESI, and now it's up to, you know, at some buildings, fifty-five percent. Our overall average is around, as a district, is fifty-five percent, which is approximately, I think, twelve to thirteen percent points higher than the state average as a district. They don't break down by grade levels at the state level, it's just, you know, here's the state, state low income percentage. So we don't have that comparison by grade levels against school, we just have it against the state average versus our schools. So it's at around, I think, forty-two, forty-two percent off the top of my head. So, and that, that's all coming off the DESI website. Anything else, questions on this?
And that was, I appreciate these numbers because I think for me, that number stuck out, you know, the forty to the fifty-five percent, that really jumped out at me at the last meeting and was very concerning. So, and I just, that's why I kind of wanted to look at, you know, where are we? And I, you know, I mean, this is, this kind of goes to, to another point that we need to think about is that, as, yes, we need to address the early learning center piece. However, you know, the fact that, you know, forty-eight, that's actually the lower, the lowest number of our low income. So, you know, as you said, we always hope that we see families do better as children get older. However, in our case, we're not seeing that in our schools anyways. We don't know outside of our schools or the children that don't go to our schools, but I mean, how can, that's just something to think about for later.
Well, if I, if I may, because that's a really interesting point, and I think the interesting piece here is the difference between what is considered low income and, you know, of those forty-eight point six percent, forty percent are below the actual poverty level.
Right.
Which is a really different number than, and if you'll just allow me two seconds, I will bring up, there are some other numbers specific to other age groups that are living under poverty. And this, this comes from Haywood Hospital and state numbers. So I, I hear your point, and I want to reiterate, this is specifically poverty line. So if you look at our children under eighteen, that number actually decreases as we would expect because the families are growing older. So that second bullet down where we have eighteen, nineteen percent of our children under eighteen living below poverty, but when we go all the way down to the five year olds, it's forty percent living under poverty, which is defined by, I think, again, thirty-five, thirty-seven thousand dollars for a family, family income. I don't know up here on these bullets, to be honest, I'm not, I'm not exactly conversational on how they defined high needs on about the fourth bullet down there, that fifty-seven of, percent of our students are high needs as compared to forty-six percent in Massachusetts. I don't know how they're defining that, that is not the high needs definition that we, that we are used to when we talk about MCAS and, and our designations, it's a separate designation. But these are really, these are really interesting numbers around poverty and health. And this, this report from, from Haywood was specifically around health and food, but we were able to glean a couple of numbers that I think are useful here and are very informative to us as a community, where our poverty level, you know, those living below poverty, you know, we exceed the state by almost two percentage points on average. So, you know, we know it's an issue in town and these numbers just kind of highlight that, I think, so.
Can you share that report with all of us?
I can, I can send it.
Or at least with me.
I just got it this afternoon and it.
I don't know if anybody else. Larry's too busy.
Yeah.
I'm writing it down.
I'll send it to you. I just got it from the CAC this afternoon. I had heard the numbers verbally, but I wanted to see them for real. And like I said, this comes from Haywood, they provided this to all the surround, the north central Massachusetts communities.
And I may reach out to Miranda and see if she can give us more, since she's.
That's where I got it.
Yeah, that's why I was going to say.
I can tell Miranda, too.
Yeah.
Like talking to her every day.
I think.
Oh, can you go back just one?
Yes, sir.
He's still writing.
I'm sorry.
I just have the last one, thirteen percent.
So our, and I think that's great. My concern is that, as great as this is, my concern is the kids that we're serving are still the ones that are considered low income. And until I do an apples to apples comparison by really digging into the DESI.
Yeah.
Versus like I can call and talk to whoever came up with this report at Haywood and really look at how they defined high needs and everything, and I'll, I'll do the work for that, I like doing stuff like that. But until I can look at that and figure out how they correlate, my concern still stands. Not, I'm just saying, it's just something for us, us, for all of us to think about going forward is, I just, it's concerning.
I just want to highlight, you know, the reason that we bring poverty into this at all, and that's about the achievement gap that is, that is highly correlated to poverty. And it starts at pre-K and kindergarten. And the problem is, the research also shows we don't have a good ability to close that gap. When you start kindergarten with a gap behind those who are not impoverished, that gap doesn't get made up. And, you know, when we're talking about forty percent of those kids and we're not even serving all them, let's not forget that not all of our kids in Winchon are even showing up to pre-K. And I don't mean that as a negative, families have what they have. But if we are able to better serve those kids and get them prepared, and we know from the data that was presented by Ms. Gilson earlier this year, that it's, interestingly, about fifty percent of our kindergarteners, if you recall from that presentation she made, were significantly behind. And we only get, we get a little over fifteen percent of our, you know, our pre-K population is about sixty percent of our kindergarten population. So we know that we get a bunch of incoming kindergarteners who we're not servicing, you know, for whatever the family's reasons are. So, you know, that's a driver here is to close that gap before they get into kindergarten so that we're not working on closing gaps in sixth, seventh and eighth grade. I mean, you know, that's what we're after.
Mr. Chair.
Larry.
Oh, I'm sorry, you done Karen?
I was just gonna.
Sorry.
Sorry. Just to, and I understand that, but my, my other concern, just to go back and not to the labor really.
It's okay.
However, is that I understand the focus right now, talking about the early learning center. My concern is that, you know, I'm looking at these numbers and I'm thinking, what can we do now, or maybe next year or the year after, to help these students in these other brackets and in the high school, because I don't have the high school numbers? Because, yes, poverty is an indication, not, not just of the achievement gap, but of how they're going to do in college.
Absolutely.
And beyond college.
Yep.
And quite honestly, I don't want to see our student, I mean, we had so many great students accepted to so many great schools, and I know that Angelina is going to be accepted to all of them. And, you know, but I mean, I want to see them not just be accepted, I want to see them actually make it through. And unfortunately, if we're not preparing them here, a lot of them don't make it through.
Absolutely. The research shows it, absolutely.
Right.
No argument from me, but I'll, I'll remind that what we've done at the upper levels is turn two schools out of turnaround.
And.
So we are making those moves and making great strides. Are we finished? We're not even close.
No.
But the long term, what we're trying to do on the long term, we can keep putting mandates on at the high end, but if we don't fix it at the low end, then those kids come up with the gap all the, and we're always behind, right?
I understand that.
That's all.
I just, I don't want to, I don't want to forget about the children we have here now.
Absolutely.
And, and my concern has to be for all of our students, not just incoming students. And, you know, I have to say that I really greatly think that Winchton does an amazing job. I think that we have amazing programs. And I don't know, you know, I think that you guys have done a fabulous job. I just, what can we do? What more can we do? I just want us to think in that.
Absolutely.
Realm. So that's all I'm asking for.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the comments, appreciate it. We're going to take one more comment from Larry on this slide, then I'm going to ask the superintendent to continue on the presentation. Larry?
I'll just make it quick. So I was going to say what you, what you said. It doesn't, the fact of the matter, no matter how you juggle the figures using these, this criteria, that criteria, no matter what criteria we use, we understand that we are part of a community that is in poverty. No matter what criteria you use, we are a poor community, along with Athol and Templeton and Gardner and Fitchburg and, you know, we're, we're in a poor part of the state. So the numbers to me, they, they clarify it, but I'm not as interested in the numbers as I am, as you said, Karen, what are we going to do about it? And so you, you took the words out of my mouth. The idea is, okay, so we have a poor community, some of our kids are getting a slow start, they're behind when we get them, what can we do to bring them up to snuff? In the meantime, what we found is that in the last few years, we've put in some programs at the middle school and at the high school that have shown promise. And I would not say yet that we should be dancing in the street, but what I am saying, as you pointed out, Mr. Superintendent, is that two schools are out of turnaround. So we are doing some things at the middle and upper end as well, and I think we should all be proud of that. But as Karen also said, we don't want to stop there. But as Karen also said, we don't want to stop there. We don't want to, we, we want to, I know we want to focus on early childhood, which is, I think, the best place to start. But we can't forget the, the kids that are already with us. So I'm agreeing with you Karen, but I'm, I don't want to lose the focus that overall, in the long, in the big picture, we, you build programs from the bottom up. You don't build them from the top down. You build them from the bottom up. So this is why I applaud your early childhood program idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Please.
Sure. A, a quick, there was questions over budget impact, and I wanted to be a little bit more specific over where those might rest. Most specifically, I, I think the budget impact that i- is the most important of note to go forward. It would be the ongoing expense, really the primary ongoing expense out of the operational budget. So I'm talking about chapter seventy net school spending, would be a dedicated kindergarten busing. So i- and, and this number comes from just our current contract, where our current contract with our current busing company is approximately, gosh, I just, I think it's three hundred and seventy-eight dollars a day per bus next year. So, you know, you mul-, I, I just took a, a quick pass at that. If we had three buses over a hundred and eighty days, you know, it would come out to roughly two hundred thousand dollars, which we do through indirect costs with the town. You know, that would be an ongoing expense. The other expenses that might hit the general budget are probably, are, are gonna become neutral because we're gonna, there's gonna be cost savings in places. There are gonna be expenses in other places that, that, you know, come out in a relatively neutral. Is it up or down? Sure, there's, there's, you know, some sort of bracket around that. But the, the largest expense would be through busing. I don't know if you wanted to, to take a stab at what we were talking about before we left tonight around, even though it's two hundred K on paper, it doesn't really come out to two hundred thousand, bottom line type of thing.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that I, I, you know, I'm still learning, the, the district is around your, your tiers and your, your busing. So I'm not sure how many buses you're operating as far as at each school in particular. But, but you may be able to, looking at the routes, you may be able to consolidate one bus, you know, one less bus at one place and, and save a little bit there. I also don't, don't believe that you'll, you'll feel the full impact of the two hundred thousand dollars. Again, because you're gonna see some reworking of, of allocations. You know, also there's, there's quite a bit of funding right now for early childhood needs. Everything that we're getting, our entire Masbo, you know, business world newsletters for the last, you know, several weeks are around, how do we address the workforce, poverty levels, all these kinds of things. And, and the recommendations sort of nationally are to focus on early childhood issues. You know, one of the reasons that we're seeing such high poverty levels with younger kids is because there's not reliable childcare right, right now. So parents are forced to exit the work, workforce to care for the kids, which is wonderful. But we know that, you know, some of that structured learning needs to happen as well. We know that we have some workforce issues nationally that we need to address. And so, you know, it kind of hits on, on multiple, multiple points. And as, as the country really tries to address that, I think you're gonna see some funding specific for those grade levels, which may help to address some of the offsets. So we were just sort of talking about, you know, certainly there's a cost to the move and certainly there would be a cost, you know, an ongoing cost. And, and so to, to put that out there, but, you know, on the backside, I don't think that you'll, you'll feel the full two hundred thousand because of, of the things that are, are happening.
Yeah, and I think, and this is worst case scenario, meaning I think we have about a hundred and fifteen kindergarten students this year. Just off the top of my head, you know, this is based on the, on the big buses which carry about fifty some odd kids. But the other thing that we know is, you know, who's most likely to drive their kids to school every day? You know, it's not seniors, right? Like it's kindergarten, especially, you know, that's your oldest. We, we experience a lot of drop off with, with the younger grades. And so as we move up through the grades, you get less and less drop off and more and more, okay, it's time to get on the bus Johnny, right? So, you know, I'm putting this as worst case scenario, meaning, gosh, I don't know, we have three buses, maybe we're stealing one. You know, we don't need a bus now over at the one to four school because there's a hundred and some odd fewer, fewer, fewer children. So it's gonna come out in the wash somewhere, but this would be, okay, if we had to have three buses to just transport every kindergartner, that's what it would be. I certainly don't think that's real. It's just worst case scenario. We know that kindergarten parents like to drop their kids off and pick them up. It's just the reality of it. Not everybody gets to do that, but, you know, it's probably the largest one. So, you know, that's, that's the real number based on our current contract with transportation in, in terms of three buses. School choice account, I, I broke this out because this is our, you know, it's a revolving account. You know, we talk about this every year at budget and, and sometimes it's a sticking point for FinCom. You know, the estimated balance of our, of our school choice account at the end of this year. So taking in our receipts as well as what we've applied through the budget, we would have a balance at the end of this fiscal year of six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars still. You know, our COVID move during, during, our Toy Town COVID move, if you will, when we moved Toy Town in its entirety to, to the high school a number of years ago now, that actual cost was somewhere just under seven thousand dollars to move all the grade levels out of Toy Town. With professional, when, when I say that with professional movers. So they, just, you know, multiplying that out a little bit, maybe inflation, thirty thousand dollars for professional movers. You know, we wouldn't obviously expect teachers to be doing any of that kind of work. We've already had conversations from a union perspective to make sure that, you know, there's no contract violations. We're not putting more on the teachers. We would, because it's not just about the teachers, it's about our custodians, about our facilities. They all have work to do over the summer. So our teachers already box up a lot of their classrooms for the summer for cleaning. You know, we would ask a little bit more in terms of boxing it, labeling it, so on and so forth, so that we could get it to and from its correct locations. But we would use movers to do that. I would anticipate that's probably about a day's worth of work for them, quite frankly, in terms of all that. So, you know, that's our estimate, about thirty thousand dollars for professional movers. And we would probably charge that to the school choice account where we have a backlog of money.
Mr. Superintendent, I wonder if we also, this is a, I wonder, I truly don't know, if we have the option to perhaps stipend teachers for extra time to allow them to pack up their room. I assume that that will be a cost. If they, if we did decide to do that, that would have a cost to it. Is that something that the CBA would allow for?
I, we've had those conversations and it's certainly something that's open to both sides. And, and I, we would, I do believe we would have the money for that at the end of the year expenses. But we're certainly open to that. And again, we're not trying to put teachers out. We want to, we understand this is already would be, it's traumatic for teachers. It's change. None of us like change, right? So trying to make it as easy as possible, A, just for the teachers in general, but just to be professional about it and, and understand that it's impactful on people's lives and, and try to be respectful of that.
Mr. Chair.
Larry.
How many teachers are gonna be impacted?
Gosh, well, every teacher at Toy Town, right? So there's not a grade that would be left at the current Toy Town school.
Twenty-five-ish?
So you're looking at around.
Twenty-eight?
I'm sorry?
Twenty-eight.
Yeah, twenty-eight, but that's not, that's teachers. That's not including paras, nurses, so on and so forth. But professional staff, if you will, teachers is about twenty-eight. At, at Memorial, you're looking at, you have Phi, it's really fewer than ten that would be moved to the early, early literacy center.
So would fifty be a good number?
Fifty?
Fifty people.
Teachers, yes. Classrooms, let's say classrooms. Yep.
If you gave each of those teachers a stipend, X amount of hours, then we would have a solid.
We could have a solid number.
Solid number to work with.
Yeah.
Pardon me? Yeah, student labor. Angelina's signing right up. I can see it on her face.
You were ball and told again.
It's okay.
Lastly, you know, there's a couple of grant impacts, but they are already specifically designed for this, if you will. So the S R three grant, which we still have, when we put in for that grant specifically, we talked about a playground, you know, that would go into the early childhood learning center that's specific to the, the little guys. That's already incorporated into the S R three grant at around three hundred thousand dollars. So it's already a cost that's been approved, requested and approved from DESI and the powers that be that approve the S R grants. Of course, it has to go out to bid and those types of things, but the money is there and has been approved for that particular cost. The other piece, and this was kind of serendipitous, that while we were doing some of this work, an HVAC grant came through, an opportunity for that. So we, we applied for that grant specifically for this opportunity, knowing that we were gonna put this forward. I think it's approximately two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. We've been approved for that. First, phase one is to do a feasibility study, which is to go out to, you know, some contractors, hey, what do you really need? So on and so forth. Submit that back to, to DESI and the, and the, and those who approve the grants. At which point step two would say, yes, you can do that. And, you know, we would have to go to, to bid for that as well. So those are the two grants that are currently sitting on the table that are, that have been created specifically for this type of project. What I haven't put up here and haven't mentioned is there, there, and, but has been mentioned is there are a number of early childhood learning grants, early literacy grants and those types of things that are out there. I don't even want to put them up here to say like, hey, this is possible, to, to act as if we have that money. We don't. But we will be pursuing those grants to further this project, you know, as it moves forward. We're looking for all those types of grant opportunities and, and they're out there quite a bit right now. There's a, there's a real large push for this around DESI and in general, as was, as Ben mentioned. But I don't have any numbers for that and I wouldn't want to put those up here. We haven't even applied for anything at this point. But those are the budget impact. But again, I want to, I, I just want to reiterate, you know, this decision is, was for us, not about money. This is not about capacity. This is about our belief in what we feel is best for our community and for our students. Lastly, is drop off slash pickup and the traffic flow issue at, let's just call it, you know, the Memorial, the, the Murdoch complex. A couple of things, and I've already mentioned it. First off, similar number of students will be in the Memorial building. I think there's not a significant change. I, I know the presentation I gave that there were numbers. I believe it's about a change based on our current students of approximately, I think, of eighteen students. So it'd be eighteen additional students housed in Memorial if this, if we pursue this. In my opinion, and, and again, I don't have hard numbers on this. I'm just being honest and transparent. It would be an increased number of bus riders and walkers as grades increase. So my point being currently, two of the grades over at the Memorial School are pre-K and K, which would be a predominant, in fact, pre-K is a hundred percent drop off pickup by parents. With the exception of possible special education, transportation, and then kindergarten. So we're now looking at grades one through four, where I would make the argument that grades three and four are much more likely to be on a bus and/or possibly start walking around grade four. So I would anticipate a, a fewer, a, a shorter line, if you will. Reduced numbers of programs for pickup drop off is another issue, if you will. So there's, there's a lot going on at the Memorial School. You have a pre-K pickup drop off, which is not the exact time of our regular pickup and drop off, but they all sort of intersect at a particular time, as we've all seen, if you've driven up Elmwood and had to pass that area. So there would be a reduction in those, in those programs. The, the pre-K wouldn't be there, the kindergarten wouldn't be there. So it's, it's, you know, programmatically, it's, it's fewer. There's an additional consideration of the Head Start program that has its own transportation and around our scheduling, which, you know, we would consider moving over to the early literacy center as well, which again, would reduce some of that pickup drop off. So we're gonna propose, and I've already talked to the, the, our SRO Officer Flag and DPW about a different traffic flow with new traffic patterns. The police department feels strongly that this would, and I'm gonna show it in the next slide. It would increase safety and flow over in that, in it, at the, at the Memorial School. And the DPW suggests that the infrastructure will support that. And I, and I'm gonna show you what I mean by this. So here is a aerial of the, so here is the Memorial School. Oh, you can't see my cursor. I'm sorry. And I don't have a way to do that. So the, the bottom right, the white complex there is the Memorial School. There it says next to Brooks Drive. You can see, let me see if I can do it like this so I can do it better, so I can get my cursor up here. There we go. So here's the Memorial School. Here's the Memorial School parking lot right here. We've got the high school, middle school, with the high school, middle school parking lot here. The current traffic flow, here's Elmwood that comes up. Currently, all the buses start at Toy Town. So the buses start at Toy Town. All nine buses stage here. The kids come out of Toy Town. The buses slowly get out. If there's a class behind or whatever else, there's a straggler. The buses all come up Elmwood and come in this drive here, what's they're calling Brooks Drive on Google. It's also the same entrance that the parents are coming in. So what you've got is all the nine buses coming up this drive, but the parents have already lined up. And as we know, they're lined up up Elmwood and possibly up to Murdoch Farms up here at certain times of the year, especially at the beginning. And then they're lined as tightly to the right as possible along this Brooks Drive, all the way up and around to right here. If you can see my cursor, which is the entrance to the football fields and then the back entrance to the parking lot. This driveway is not intended to have three lanes. And I say three lanes for this. We've got the cars pushed as far to the right as possible. You've got the buses coming in past all those cars and they're kind of big. And then lastly, we've got traffic that's trying to get out of here, coming back down this way. And we also have a fourth traffic flow, which is the pre-K of the parents that aren't in the typical drop off or pickup, and they're trying to get to middle school or somewhere else. So we've got four lanes of traffic trying to go here. If there's an emergency, we're in trouble. If an ambulance needs to come down here during that time, it's gonna be problematic. So the proposed traffic flow would be, going forward, is parent pickup drop off would come up north central on the back drive up here. If you'll, some folks may know, the back entrance used to be a one-way. The town during our school, safe, safe routes to school audit, which we're currently in the middle of with the town, proposed to remove that as a one-way. There's no good, they had no good reason for it. It just was there back in the nineties. We have actually pulled the gate. There was an old gate back there, which is no longer. We have actually striped this street now to indicate that it is a two-way. So the proposed traffic flow would be parents coming in north central and lining up, coming in Brooks, coming around this way and lining up to this particular stop sign right here at this intersection, because we don't want traffic hanging out on the bridge. There's a small bridge here over the creek. Not safe to just have traffic sitting there all the time. Buses would come in the same way they currently do and stage here. They're not staging at Toy Town anymore. They would just stage at Memorial. You got all nine buses. They're all ready to go. Kids exit, get on buses, leave. As buses are leaving, we would start directing traffic down through the parking lot and line up and actually pick up kids right here in front of the school, as opposed to currently, we do steps up here on the side, kind of jaunty park, sidewalk up back. If you've been on that, there's usually a lot of complaints about that sidewalk. Instead now, the flow would come right down, this buses exit, parents would come right in front of the school and students would exit to the parents' cars and exit out the front gate. But it would leave, it would leave this road completely open for traffic, other, other types of traffic, which we currently don't do. And emergent, the, the SRO was very happy about that from an emergency perspective. Also very, as an aside, I did check with DPW about the infrastructure of North Central. I know there's been conversation in the past about why we don't use North Central for entry and exit. I have heard many different pieces, but the biggest piece I heard was the weight of buses over that. That, that North Central at the time was really not designed to carry, you know, large buses all the time. Talking to Brian Crowdo, had no concerns over parents, you know, standard cars going through there in terms of, of transportation. You know, we would have to, of course, work with parents, just like we always do. We would create videos and so on and so forth about how that traffic flow would work, needing to make sure that they don't come in and start lining up at two o'clock the way they do now for the three fifteen dismissal. I get that parents really want to pick up their children, but, you know, we do have buses here at the Murdoch High School, Middle School at about two o'clock. So we would make sure that that traffic, you know, doesn't impinge on the pickup drop off. Parents wouldn't be able to start lining up until, let's say, two fifteen, two thirty, when, when the, once the bus is clear from the high school, middle school. So that would be the new traffic flow pattern, which we believe is, is much improved and would keep the traffic off of Elmwood, which is, as you probably know, we've got the traffic that comes down from Rinj on, gosh, I can't think of the name of the street that's up there.
Forestall?
Yeah, that comes down Forestall. So what we get complaints about is people coming down Forestall that are not picking up kids. They get stuck in the back flow on, on Elmwood because they're coming back from Market Basket or wherever. So this would take that piece away from the community as well. So that's the proposed, and we've gotten sort of support from both police and DPW.
Mr. Chair. Yes, Greg and then Karen?
I just, perhaps this is something you can't do because of, of regulations, you know, state laws, liability or whatever. But has, has any thought ever been given to having like two or three drop off points in different areas of town for the younger kids to get them on some sort of buses or vans? And basically a shuttle system where the parents didn't have to come in and sit in line in front of the, the schools and, and block, you know, the driveways, you know, as you point out, is a problem for emergency vehicles. And luckily, I haven't had to do it often, but I've had to, to sit there a number of times with my granddaughter. And it, it really is.
It's an interesting concept that, to be honest, I don't know that there's any, it just, I don't think it's something we've actually really ever considered. But it's an interesting concept that, you know, to kind of stage in areas, something we could certainly look at and talk to the busing company about. You know, I don't know if that would impact the numbers of buses that we have and the bus routes and the times on buses would be the types of considerations. With the routing, I think, would be the biggest piece, but certainly something that we could talk to the bus company about in general terms. But work with the town as well, where those places might be that they're willing to accommodate at the same time.
You know, that wouldn't do away with all of the drop offs, I'm sure. But I've thought, you know, if it thinned it out even by half or.
Yeah.
That, that it might help.
And, and it's a, you know, it's a challenge in every community. I, I passed through about three or four communities every day on my way here. And guess what? There's a line in every one of them. I know which schools are the elementary schools because there's a line some, you know, at, at a number of different places that I pass. So, you know, it's a challenge and we're, you know, we'll do the best we can, but I, you know, hopefully this could be a step in the right direction and just clearing up the traffic flow and making it, quite frankly, a little safer in, in terms of those. Fortunately, that's never happened for us, but, you know, it's certainly something I know that the, the police have concerns about. I've talked to Officer Flag about routinely, so.
I bet.
Karen?
So I think you touched on one of my concerns, the, if we're using that back way. Just thinking as a parent that used to have to drive in there to pick up my son before he had his awesome license. You know, one of the. before he had his awesome license, you know, one of the problems that I ran into was that the buses double-parked coming down beside the middle high school. So even as if you were a parent that was trying to go out that way.
You can't.
Because the buses were there so early.
Mm-hmm. I know exactly what you're talking about.
Right. So if we have parents that are maybe early themselves, but, you know, sometimes the buses were there really early too. And if you're a parent, you know, picking up at 2:05, and you can't get out because that's blocked, or now you're gonna have everybody coming in that back way, you can't get out that way either, even though it's gonna be two-way.
It is, and it's, it's currently striped, by the way.
Right. And I, and I understand that, and I'll be honest, I never understood the one-way there, but, I mean, whatever, but, I mean, you're still gonna, as much as I know it's striped that way, you're still gonna have the problem with, I, I've just seen it from trying to go out that way, that people block it.
Correct. And so, you know, the, the parking lots have been re-marked this year, and I know you probably haven't been up there as much this year, so there's new signage. So at pickup time, at bus time for the high school, middle school, it is marked that that is a one-way. Coming, coming down, I keep forgetting I have this. So there is a sign right here that marks that when buses are here, this, this lane becomes a one-way going from here to here, because the buses are double-parked. So it, it is the intent, and that's why, you know, we direct parents to go out that back door. The other piece is that it's a, it's a one-hour stagger for the elementary, right? So at 2:15, there are no buses and very few kids left at the high school in terms of that. So what we're gonna have to do is train, train, you know, I say that respectfully, parents to say, you're, they're gonna run into exactly what you're talking about. We can't have you coming at two o'clock, like, you're gonna have to wait, you're gonna have to wait to get in line till 2:15. You know, I know different, different parents have different strategies. I'm gonna be the first in line so I can get out of there. And there's the other strategy to say, eh, I'll wait till 3:30. There won't be a line. That's my strategy. But at any rate, we definitely have had talks about that, and I, and actually Officer Flag and I sat down and actually kind of went through this and looked at it, and, you know, talked about those very things and where those kind of issues might be, and how we could address those going forward. There's no great pickup-dropoff solution in general for us anywhere, but the feel was this is a step in the right direction at any rate.
No, I like your idea. I just, I could never find Officer Flag when I could have really used her a couple times there, you know. So I like that idea, though. And I like Greg's idea of shuttle, you know. I, I think you should reach out and ask parents if they'd do it, though. Because I think that's gonna be your key. It's, it's great that, I'm sure you can work it out with the bus company, but will the parents do it?
Mr. Superintendent, thank you very much. I know that this was not intended to be a comprehensive presentation on the Early Literacy Center, as you, as you certainly began last week. But last week, as, or two weeks ago, as you know, there were some very specific questions, which I feel like those questions have all been answered tonight. Not all of our questions have been answered. As Mr. Murphy pointed out a couple of weeks ago, the input from our community and from our teachers and from our students is, is very important, and so we're glad that that is happening over the next week or so, if I remember the correct, the dates correctly. At our next school committee meeting, I would ask that you please bring back information from those fora, the various fora that you're hosting, so that we can hear about that and use that to, to help inform us on whether or not we, we care to support the Early Literacy Center, or make it, or possibly make a change.
Absolutely.
So thank you for that.
Thank you. Next item.
You're still up. Yep, still you.
Facilities Director update. Bad news.
Sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, before we move on, just because I did promise to do some homework on, on whether we needed to vote on going forward. We have as a policy in our policy regulations that the organization of our school district for grade configurations is pre-K through fifth grade, and then middle school is six, seven, eight, and then high school is nine through twelve. So there is going to be the question of, we may have to make a policy change. I did actually contact MASK about this, so I did verify that we would have to make a policy change in order to make a change as far as moving fifth grade to the middle school level. So I just did want to clarify that I did my homework, and that we would have to vote on anything that has a budget impact. So just to do my homework.
Thank you for that. Would you please circulate that policy to the rest of the committee members?
I will, yes.
Thank you. Facilities update. Bad news, but happy for the person. Martin Johnson, for those of you that know him, who is our facilities director, has announced his retirement. He will be retiring in August, which is, is not a good day for our district, for those of you that know Martin. And we can, we can endeavor in his, his celebration as, as that date gets closer. I don't want to dwell on it, because there was a time I said, "I'm leaving when he leaves." I can't imagine not working in, in the district without Martin. But at any rate, he has announced his retirement for August 10th, August 6th, somewhere in that range, which, you know, I, I've accepted, obviously. He will certainly be around to help out, as he's not going anywhere, and if you know Martin, he's gonna have to keep doing something. So at any rate, we can pursue that later, at a later date. But the second piece of this update is that I have taken this opportunity to talk a little bit with the town manager about possible opportunities where we could maybe be more efficient in the way that we run our facilities across the town and schools. So we have endeavored in some, some initial conversations to see if there's any place that we can share and do that kind of work. We've done a really great job working with DPW. I've mentioned Brian Crowdo here this evening, very effective at his job. And so if there's any place, much like we had talked about at one point, sharing possibly, finance director, that type of thing, the town manager and I have taken that opportunity to pursue those types of discussions going forward as well, relative to facilities. So just putting that on the table, so that it's not a surprise, as we sort of continue talking and, and, you know, as we enter budget season, we would, it would certainly be a consideration about, around budget. But wanted you to be aware that, A, Martin's retiring, and that, that we already are working on a replacement plan for Martin. Questions on that? That's really all I have to report at this point on, on facilities. Anything to add?
I, I voluntold Larry for the, for the retirement party.
Congratulations to Martin, and certainly a tough day for the district when that happens, but thank you for being creative and finding a way to meet the, the district's needs. So looking forward to hearing what, what options might be out there.
Great. Thank you.
It can't be Brian, though. He already has, like, three million jobs in the town.
Just looking at ways that we can maybe, you know, be more efficient in the way that we operate across the town, I think, is, is, and possible cost savings for both sides of the House, I think. You know, for, for this community and the school system to continue to be successful, we, we've got to look at working together, you know, in more effective ways. So just trying to do that, and Justin, Mr. Salzback is, is always very open to conversation, so.
But just for clarification, Mr. Chair, so we're not gonna lose a position. We're still gonna have another body in.
I'm not looking at losing any positions.
Yeah. So they, they won't be the director, so to speak, but somebody will be in there to do the work.
We'll have, we will still be fully staffed. Just looking at how, are there ways that we can be creative in the way that we do our approach?
I just don't want anyone to think we're gonna be down a man.
Nope. We are not. Absolutely not. No. No, we've got plenty of work.
Yes. Yes, you do.
The other piece, and that, and that the committee has asked for myself, and I believe, actually, if we go back to, to a tri-board or the budget meetings with, with FinCom and, and the Board of Selectmen, there, there's, you know, always talk about sort of the cost and revenue sharing, you know, relative to whether it's solar or the override and so on, and possibly over other opportunities. I, I know that this committee and, and the Board of Selectmen sort of tasked myself and Justin to sort of talk about ways that we might be to memorialize some of that, and so that we're not constantly doing this conversation about, yeah, but you said, I said, gentleman's agreement, we shook hands, all those types of good things. In talking about this, we, we've, we've kind of kicked it around a number of times, and one of the things that, what we've kind of arrived at is really forming a committee. It shouldn't be, this should not be reduced to Justin and I, or Mr. Salzback and I simply saying, this is the way it's gonna happen. We feel, and it's going to be presented, I believe, at the tri-board meeting, is that a committee should be formed with members from the Board of Selectmen, this committee, and FinCom to talk about how best to do the cost-revenue sharing for the town, so that we can memorialize an agreement and go forward where all voices are heard, as opposed to just the town manager and myself making those recommendations. So I think at the tri-board meeting, we will be looking to have two representatives from the school committee to be on such a committee, most likely two from the Board of Selectmen, and then a representative from FinCom to work as a committee to memorialize that type of agreement for the town and the schools. Great. And I believe, and just as an aside, the tri-board is currently slated for January 17.
Mr. Chair.
Larry.
Do we have a liaison to the FinCom committee? Isn't that one of our, one of our committees?
No.
We have a finance subcommittee, which Alicia and I are on, not necessarily a liaison to the FinCom.
But a finance committee.
Yep.
Okay.
According to the charter bylaws, excuse me, Mr. Chair, and I'm on the Charter Bylaw Review Committee, which is technically still in effect for the town. That's what the tri-board is. That, that's part of the purpose of the tri-board meetings, is so that we act in liaison. So I don't think technically we would need a liaison. But hey, if Larry wants to do it, we would always be happy to have him do it.
But if, if, just again, for clarification, this would be like an ad hoc committee, right?
Correct.
So it would only meet a couple of times, establish the agreement on a, you know, the percentage that each town's gonna get and the school's gonna get from revenues, right?
Correct.
So it's just a short committee, call-a-meetings. I, so I don't know, Karen, if that...
No, I was saying your, your question about the liaison.
About the liaison. I just, I, I thought, I saw a member finance, I just didn't know if it was liaison. I just, just, but, yeah, I mean, I think it's a worthwhile thing to do, put it in writing so that we don't have any more questions. So I, it should take a meeting or two, I would think, just get it done.
Just having the right people in the room, and it's not just the town manager and I sort of thinking what we think is best. The, the voices of the community need to be heard on this, and, and we felt like that's the, you know, the most appropriate way to pursue it, and to, to bring it up at tri-board, to move it forward.
So are you asking us to do something tonight in preparation for the 17th?
No. Just giving you the information is that when you get there on the 17th, you're not surprised by where this come from.
Okay. So they're not gonna put the committee together on the 17th, then?
So on January 17th at 7:00 PM, the tri-board will be meeting. The intention of the tri-board on this topic is to get agreement between the three committees about the construction of that committee and what the membership would be. We would then assign our own members if we choose to do so.
Okay.
So you're not gonna be naming names. You're just going to be identifying how many people the committee might be, what constitution it might be from the various other committees that exist.
Okay.
All right. I think that completes my time.
Are you sure?
Positive.
That's saying he and, he and Justin are sick of talking about it, basically.
So we have our next agenda item, which is our subcommittee reports. Any reports from the existing subcommittees, we just mentioned the finance subcommittee, any other subcommittees want to report out? Larry?
I think the, the calendar committee will be meeting within the next month or so. And we should have something sometime in February.
Fantastic.
For the calendar. Yep.
Others?
Mr. Chair, I, I did touch base with, with Alicia, and we're going to put together, we're trying to consolidate our calendars for the communications committee. And I don't know if you want to mention...
Yes. The policy subcommittee will be meeting on Monday, January 23rd at 6:00 PM. The official announcement, the public announcement of that meeting will be coming in the coming weeks. But we can put that in the minutes for now, and represent it to those that are watching, that this policy subcommittee, which is, of course, an open meeting, will be on Monday, January 23rd at 6:00 PM. More details to follow, and a public announcement soon. Other subcommittees? All right. All right. Our next agenda item, we are almost there, folks, is new business. And our first item is the open meeting law complaint review. The Winchandon School Committee is in receipt of an open meeting law complaint dated December 22nd, 2022, from a resident of Winchandon. This complaint suggested that the town did not livestream the 2020, excuse me, December 20th school committee meeting, and that this was a violation of Massachusetts' open meeting laws. During the school committee meeting on December 20th, an attendee asked if the school committee meeting was being livestreamed. At that time, it was shared that the meeting was being broadcast via local cable television, but that live streaming was not currently possible for public meetings in Winchandon. Winchandon School Committee meetings and other public meetings were held via Zoom during the height of the COVID-19 pandemic, as allowed by Governor Baker's March 2020 executive order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Since the pandemic has lessened its effects on our daily lives, the school committee has chosen to follow the town in returning to an in-person meetings, excuse me, in-person meetings with cable television broadcast and live streaming. However, in May 2000, in approximately May 2022, the town's live-streaming capabilities became inoperable, when a piece of live-streaming equipment failed. Since then, no public meetings in Winchandon have been livestreamed by the town. The complaint that you have received refers to a Board of Selectmen meeting on December 19th as an example of a hybrid meeting that has occurred since the live-streaming equipment went down. The December 19th Board of Selectmen meeting could not be livestreamed due to the same equipment issues that the town is experiencing. Instead of live-streaming, the December 19th Board of Selectmen meeting was held in person, broadcast on cable television, and included one external participant who connected via Zoom. The participant that was on Zoom experienced technical difficulties and was affected by the inability to view the whole meeting. This person was also not able to be understood by those that were watching the meeting's cable broadcast. The town of Winchandon has secured a consultant to rebuild our livestream equipment in a way that would allow for future live-streaming. Additionally, the town's new contract with Comcast for cable television service includes funding to pay for the repairs. Because such funds can only be allocated to this project through town meeting, the repairs are expected to be made once the funding to buy the new equipment is made available by the town. In Massachusetts, live-streaming of public meetings is not prohibited or required. It is the personal opinion of the chair that our school committee should hold meetings in person and open to the public, continue to broadcast meetings via local cable television, and electively return to live-streaming as soon as possible. Until live-streaming is again possible in Winchandon, it is the personal opinion of the chair that our school committee should hold meetings in person and continue to broadcast meetings via local cable television. Massachusetts Open Meeting Laws require that an open meeting law complaint be addressed as follows. The complaint must be disseminated to the members of the public body, which occurred on December 28th of this, of last year. The public body must meet to review the complaint within 14 business days or approximately 22 calendar days, which is occurring this evening. And the public body must respond to the complainant and the Massachusetts Attorney General in writing, which will occur after this evening's meeting. Tonight, I welcome your thoughts, questions, and concerns, and request that you delegate the responsibility of responding to the complainant to me.
Mr. Chair.
Karen?
So the only, and I appreciate everything, all the work you put into this, thank you. I think you did a very thorough job. The only thing that I would take issue with is that we never actually voted to go back to just live in-person meetings. We've actually had multiple conversations about trying to make these meetings hybrid, and we've had multiple conversations, and Dad can back me up because I keep bugging him about it, to bug Justin about it, about the fact that we wanted to try and get these open as hybrid meetings. And I understand that the one person who took part in the Board of Selectmen meeting had a had a problem with the Zoom, and I don't know how they connected via Zoom, whether that was a personal account or through the town. Do we know that? But go ahead and answer, I'm sorry.
I do not.
Okay, so, I mean, that would be my first question as far as that, but we, I kept being told that the town was working on getting us the capability to hold hybrid meetings in the sense of having Zoom capability for our public, with the understanding that we would hopefully go back to that. So I don't think that we ever, as a board, had the consensus that we were just going to have public and livestream. I'm not saying that we're against that, I'm just saying that I think if we can be more open about possibly at some point whether or not our governor, our new governor, as of today, decides to extend again the hybrid meeting resolution, which is actually in effect until March of this year, that we can go forward with Zoom meetings as a public meeting possibility. We should actually consider that, just for the sake of, you know, we live in a town that gets icy really quickly, as we discussed this afternoon. So for safety's sake, for all of our sake, if we can do that, it would be great. Just a point.
Thank you. Other?
Greg? I guess I would, I mean, Karen's points are well taken, but I mean, in terms of responding to this specifically, I basically think that the committee needs to respond by declaring that we were not remiss in not livestreaming that evening and that due to the technical capabilities which we had at our disposal, we basically provided as much access as possible to the public to participate in that particular meeting.
Thank you. Others?
Sorry, one more question. So are we saying that we can't go back to live streaming until our town meeting votes on the funds? Is that my understanding of what you read to us?
The equipment that is used by the town for live streaming is broken, and the only way to return to live streaming is to have that equipment repaired. The equipment that does that live streaming cannot be repaired without substantial funding. And the funding that appears to potentially be available, if the town voted to allow it, is coming from a certain source that requires town meeting approval. So we would not be able to make the repairs to the necessary equipment until the funding is made available.
So at least town meeting, okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that, thanks.
Thank you. If no other objections, I will respond to the complainant and make sure that the AG's office is notified of the review tonight. Thank you. Our next item is the mid-year review of the superintendent discussion, and I would ask any of the members that have an interest in beginning this discussion to speak up now. Okay. We've never been quiet. Larry?
First of all, because we've had trouble getting a tool to use, I think when we talked about it last, last, when you first got the job, we're trying to give you some feedback, and we couldn't really find the right tool. So I think the first thing is to find a tool that the school committee and Thad can agree upon, that will provide the kind of feedback. Remember the first one, the one that we do now is really just feedback, it's not evaluative, it's just, it's just feedback. And then the one at the end of the year is summative, so that's the one that is, you know, we make a judgment on. So first, the first thing in my mind is that we've got to find a tool that works for both the school committee and for Thad. And that needs to be done like yesterday, so we can get him some feedback within timely fashion.
Mr. Chair. Greg?
Yeah, I agree with Larry. I mean, I would like to see us be presented with some sort of tool at the next school committee meeting and have a couple of weeks to fill out our responses and then have the the report and or the evaluation with, I mean, two meetings from now. The sooner the better.
Yeah, I think we should have something in Thad's hands for February.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Karen?
So one of the nice things about going to the MASC conference is they did have a bunch of great workshops, and I will double check what I brought home from the superintendent evaluation workshop. I don't know that we had a mid-year review tool in there, but I can double check again. It was, it's a very intensive conference, so you went from one workshop to another, so I can't remember everything, but if there is something, I will scan it and send it around to everybody for you to look at.
And I think the last.
Including Thad, of course.
I think, I think when we did this with Joan, and even with Steve, Hat Ed, I think, I think the MASC gave us some templates. I think Tracy sent us one.
Well, that's what I have.
And so if we can get our hands on that, and I would recommend that the chair and Thad work together on acquiring a tool that we can look at for our next meeting, and hopefully there's something that you can agree upon, and we'll take a peek at it and approve it, and then we can move forward.
I know Thad's going to be really happy to hear this, but the superintendent evaluation packet from MASC was about a quarter of an inch thick. So I'm sure that those forms are in there, Larry, because you know Tracy, Tracy's the one who did the workshop, so I'm sure that's in there. So I will get that to you by the end of the week, I guess tomorrow.
That would be wonderful, that's a good place, that's a great place to start. Mr. Murphy's suggestion that the chair and the superintendent work together to find a, an appropriate tool is well taken, and as long as the superintendent agrees, we'll do exactly that. But it would be great, Karen, to start with what MASC was presenting, so if you can send that, might as well just send it to the whole committee so everyone can see it.
Well, that's what I was going to do.
Yeah.
I was going to send it to all of you and Thad.
Great.
I'll send you the whole presentation, I mean, I'll send you a link to the presentation too, if you want.
Sure.
That way you can have both. But I'll try and pull out, I'll try and look really quickly and try and delineate which is which for you, just to make life easier, so you're not looking at the entire packet, because it is a lot of work.
That's great, that's great. Perfect first step, thank you. Other conversation on that one? All right, that brings us to the MASC conference update.
Which I was going to ask to table to February so I can put together my presentation, which was going to involve a lot of copies for you guys.
Larry?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, did you guys get the, do you get the magazine that MASC sends out?
Electronic one?
Yeah.
Like, you get something in the mail?
Yeah, I got something in the mail, and it highlighted.
You and I do, yeah.
Yeah, it highlighted, I think because I was the chair, I think I still get it. And so anyway, that's what, I was just going to recommend, it's pretty, it has the six, the six subjects that were voted on and what they were about and whatnot, right? It's listed right in there.
Yeah.
So we got a copy of that, and then when you did your presentation, we could follow along with you.
Right, no, I was going to do that, and there was a nice little brief blurb that kind of went over a couple of other little things that I thought were important for us, but I wanted to give you, I did bring home some copies of some, including the superintendent evaluation and the school committee self-evaluation forms and like a bunch, just some other nice presentations that they did that I thought everybody should have, so I'll be stopping in to see Thad pretty soon, just to use the copier. I'm sure he'll be excited. Hey, it's not contract time.
So we have an agenda item for the conference update. Would someone like to make a motion to table that?
I would.
We have a motion to table and a second for 9C. Any discussion? Those in favor, Alicia?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Karen? And the chair votes aye. So that is postponed, we'll put that in future agenda items. Do you have a preference, Karen, as to whether or not that comes up quick or not quick?
I'll, probably the beginning of February. I'll coordinate with you and Thad on when we're doing budget and everything, I think.
Okay. That brings us to old business, which I don't think we have any of. All right. And future agenda items, we just added the MASC conference update, you see the ELA curriculum adoption there. Any other agenda items folks would like to put on the radar?
Mr. Chair.
Greg?
The early learning center update.
Oh, sure. Others? Okay, that brings us to the end, folks, hey. Closing comments, and we'll start with Alicia.
Happy New Year and looking forward to a great 2023 year. Keep it short and simple.
Thank you. Karen?
I want to echo Alicia, Happy New Year. Everybody stays safe and warm and dry, and I hope everybody stays healthy.
Great. Larry?
Happy New Year to everyone, and hopefully we will have a happy, healthy, and productive year in 2023. And I just want to, I was very impressed with Angelina's report tonight, and Ms. Rondo, I just want to thank you for all that you do to get our kids out and into the other communities, out into the state functioning organizations, to the State House, and then what a great honor, though, to be able to, you know, kick, kick the whole statewide initiate off with our kids singing the National Anthem. I think that's just so cool. So I appreciate the work that you do with the kids and the leadership that you show, and it's just great stuff. So I want to thank you for that, and I'm done, thank you.
Great. Greg?
Well, Mr. Chair, I didn't say anything at this time at the last committee meeting, so I'm going to take a couple of seconds now. I just wanted to thank Thad again for bringing the update on the literacy center tonight. I just think it, it's vitally important that we do that, and the concerns that Karen and Larry have brought forward are, are important, but I think that starting at that level is where the focus needs to be right now. We do have problems from, you know, pre-K right up through the time the kids graduate, but you eat an apple one bite at a time, and I think that's what we have to do here. Sometimes the problem can be so daunting that if you try to tackle everything all at once, you get nowhere. So I, I think this is a great place to start, and I appreciate the fact that you're getting, taking steps to get more input from the community and the staff, but, and I'm sure you'll do this, but I just, I want, in putting this together, to be careful that, yes, we'd like to make everyone happy, but you're unlikely to do that. I just don't want to see you and the people that you're working with tie yourselves in knots to try to satisfy everybody's single concern regarding this project, because I think this is too important for it to be delayed or, or stopped, because there are too many issues that people want answered or dealt with. The issue, the main issue is, is the kids' progress and doing something to overcome the problems related to that, so. And Happy New Year. I'm done.
Fantastic. Very quickly, please to all of our parents, community members, teachers, and students, please watch out for the open forums and the fora and the surveys that are coming out, because these are the opportunities, the official opportunities for you to have a part in this decision-making process. The school committee is interested in your feedback so that we can make a, an informed decision. So please do attend those if you are interested and able to do so. And make sure you get your tickets to Matilda, because you'll have a great opportunity to see some of our fantastic high school students in that play on February 3rd or 4th. And so please get out there and get those tickets. With that, welcome a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned at 7:46, thank you.